All fair. Close. College, I trust being a little bit lengthy, a little bit longer than you thought. John, do your good men. Okay. To the actual prayers. Next on agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance in a Moment Meditation. Please keep your thoughts and prayers for the singer family for loss of her son Chase. Our condolences and prayers for the singer family. Next on the agenda. For Education's Knowledge Treasury Report for June 2021, July 2021, and August 2022. Next on the agenda is the President's Report. Lori Distefano?
Yeah. Yeah, I want to know why it wasn't an option to pay our taxes in person this year.
So during COVID, the previous administration had decided to have a third party collect taxes because of the timeframe that exists in order to sign a contract for that to happen. The decision was made also for it to continue into the business year for this year. Obviously, in collaboration with the Board and the Business Office, as we continue, hopefully, to come out of the pandemic, this is something that the Board and the administration can continue to look at and consider reverting back to in-person payments again for the future.
Oh, so it's because of previous agreement, not because you're not set up?
No.
Because I know that window, I've been going here 20 years, paying my taxes in person. And you go to the bank, it's not a problem.
Right.
And the other thing is, I did check off the thing to get my receipt. The bank process is September 16th. Here it is, October 18th. I still haven't gotten my receipt back yet. Is there a timeframe I should be expecting it?
I can look into that and make sure we get back to you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the President's Report. Couple things to report tonight. Just want the public to know that negotiations continue with our labor unions. Everything has been in good state so far, and I appreciate the conversations we're having with everyone. Those will continue this week with the hope of having agreements in place pretty soon. The Tech Committee also met recently. Mr. Carter, the other little bit here tonight, I think Dr. Coats will address this during his report. And that was a good meeting, and the Florida should update Dr. Coats. That is all I have for tonight. Moderative update.
Good night.
Good night. Next on agenda, Super Tenor Report. Dr. Coats.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to invite Land Associates to come forward to provide the Board of Education with an update on the research that has been completed in regards to our education HVAC work and our benefits.
Okay. Well, thank you for having us. Matt Heldon-Mo from Land Associates.
Scott Ziegler from Gerard Associates.
And I guess you can tell because we don't have a PowerPoint presentation up just yet that we're not going to be able to give you a public presentation and fully disclose the content of our recommendations report. So it was delivered to the school district in draft format this afternoon. It is a very thorough document testament to Gerard Associates' efforts in looking at the school districts and making sure that they give a very thorough and complex understanding of your existing HVAC systems to provide you with good conclusive evidence-based recommendations. What we have withdrawn, and I know everybody wants to do a page turn to the cost estimate, we've withdrawn the cost estimate. We're still getting information as of this afternoon. And Gerard Associates, just so you understand our workflow, is our consultant. They provide that information to us. We look to summarize the cost information provided in the recommendations report. Knowing that the Board and many of the community would be eager to look at those numbers, I felt a little uncomfortable presenting that in a draft report today, knowing that we're still verifying and reconciling costs between arts humanities. So we want to be confident that the cost estimates are accurate, fair, thorough, and represent what we think are in the community's best interests, meaning they're full, they're well-rounded, they include soft costs, they include general condition costs. Gerard Associates is our MEP consultant, Mechanical Electrical Plumbing Engineering Consultant. So chiefly in a project that's split up by primes, we call those the primes, land will be responsible for the general construction work. So when they give us a report, they give us recommendations. We just want to make sure it includes general conditions, general construction costs, things for bonds, abatement costs, which we truly know based on the recommendations and their systems. Having received a report today in draft, I can now look at the recommendations and say, if we went with this system, it may impact and disturb these finishes in these locations, so we need to take that into context when we provide you with a recommendation for a cost estimate on abatement. The report is nearly 80 or so pages, probably about 20 pages per building. And based on the fact that we just got it this afternoon, I gotta assume that you probably don't have a lot of questions. Scott, is there anything that you want to add about your approach or findings?
Oh, just generally speaking, we did go to all four school buildings, myself and the electrical engineer in the office. We went through all the HVAC systems myself and the electrical engineer. And the electrical engineer went through most of the panel boards. And primarily, at this point, what we're looking at is the actual electric service, just to make sure anything we recommend or put options to, we know how that affects the existing electrical service. So after we did all of that, we also used the 2015 building condition survey that we did with land also as a tool, right, just to check on things that we may have listed then and are still around now and how we can also attack those as well. So like Matt said, the report is comprehensive. There's a lot of information in the report because we looked at every system. The buildings are large, there's a lot of systems, so everything is covered in there. What we tried to do is, there's at least two options per building. In some cases, like the high school in Scotstown, I presented three options in there, just because in my mind, there's a third way to do it without impacting a lot of the spaces and running into abatement issues that, you know, could happen depending on the scope of work at like CJ Hooker or GIS, right? So those two buildings are limited and what we could do, I still try to stay budget conscious, right, without doing a huge abatement project. So that's kind of the general work though through there. The existing systems are described, they're given a grade from fair to excellent. That's also defined in the report too, so when you see the word fair, you can go back to the definition and realize what that means, like all the way up through excellence. Anything that's new, we worked the last capital project, all that stuff is what I would consider brand new, even at this point, it's three years old, it's still brand new. After the background for everything, that's when you get into the options. And then at the end, after we vet everything, there'll be cost comparisons per building, and then it'll all be summed up at the end, so you can get a sense of the global project cost per option one, per option two, per option three. Also included in here, because I thought it would be useful, is the classroom unit ventilator study, which we talked about the last time we all met, because it's a good supporting document to everything that's built in here, especially with regards to the classrooms themselves, which are primarily serviced by a unit ventilator. So it's a good tool to have here and it's a good reference. Lastly, at the end, I put in sketches, because to me, all this stuff is fine, but if I can present a drawing that shows, hey, this is what we're gonna do in these rooms, and this is what we're gonna do in these rooms, I think it paints a better picture for everybody to get a concept of the scale of the job, which is big, especially if you try to tackle four schools. And even on a school by school basis, the scale is large. So there's sketches in the back that show what we're proposing to do in each option and which spaces get what, and follow suit to match the description in the report.
I would just add, just for context, the recommendations are provided as sort of your fundamental need based as option one, getting up to option two and three, which become more wants, if you will, than needs. Certainly, as a mechanical engineer, you can appreciate this, you know, these are all important systems. I think the community will agree, they're all important systems. But can you get away with doing option one? And I know that might sound like you're getting away with something in a bad way. Can you live, can you get by with just doing option one? By code, yes. Option two and three will provide you with some extra bells and whistles related to ventilation and perhaps thermal comfort, which you don't otherwise have to have. Besides that, from a cost standpoint, big picture, we're no different than the message we delivered five, eight years ago, which to do the whole district in a full-blown, or we're all of your HVAC system is going to be north of $30 million for four schools. So I think at the fundamental level in the option one, despite going through costs and really getting granular in detail, you're gonna probably end up, and I'm just speculating, you're probably gonna end up with a phased approach and trying to prioritize which options you want to implement and perhaps which locations you want to focus on. So I don't think that the outcome of this report is gonna change, more than likely it's not gonna change for events, approach going forward, but we just wanted you to be aware of it. At the minimum, option one right now is looking like a minimum $24 million. Option three, which we really have to vet out the cap of, on paper, it's looking somewhere around 36. I have to go through abatement costs, GC costs and soft costs, which I just have to make sure that disclaimer here is, costs need to be reconciled, we need to present a thorough, comprehensive estimate, we need to put it on paper, and I'd like to show you graphics next time we get around to this. So the next presentation should really be where your consumption, graphically, what does this look like, what does it do to your school by location maps, and then costs. So we plan to take this report, finalize the costs, issue a final draft, come back, give you a full-blown presentation that the board of ed can respond with questions based on having the report in hand for at least a few weeks, and the public can digest as we do for the public.
It's a quick question, but I did flip through it. Pretty accurate on the cost page. I did, I made a flip through that, but I did, the question I have, which you said, option one that you laid out in the buildings is the base option, basically, right? That option one is included in option two, but option two has had your thing, is that how I read it?
Yeah, it's modified. So like, let's say option one is, we replaced what we got. Option two adds air conditioning to that. So like the typical classroom, you know, then when you're in CJ Hooker, we take that out and put it back in, that's option one. Option two now, if you do option one, where we put the cooling coil in there, then any of your option, at CJ Hooker, it's only option two. You would provide air conditioning by connecting that unit vent to a condenser.
That's connected, so one plus cooling, basically, for option two.
Yes.
Or CJ Hooker.
Yep.
But there would be also an option one, the same as option two afterward.
Correct.
Now, second question I had is how, you provided sketches, I think that's always at the end, how granular can we get? Can we get to just certain parts of each building and then do multiple buildings in certain part? I mean, I know GIS, GIS could be certain wings are worse than other wings. Can we get that granular in this approach or not?
I think it depended on which option for cooling. So like GIS, to me, there's only one, like you do the general replacement, or option two is the direct, the DX cooling. In the DX cooling, you can do one classroom or you can do 35 of them.
Okay, we can do that too.
Right, so you could. If we decide to do the chill water, then that becomes a little more complicated because on chill, you're not gonna buy smaller chillers than what I have in the report. So if you're gonna do chill water, you gotta buy the plant, and the plants put the expenses with it.
You're saying there's no scalability, like you're suggesting incremental scalability?
The chill water approach, it's much, it's much harder to scale. Whereas if you did it on the DX, you can do five in Scotstown, six in CJ Hooker.
That's why I know what I really, really need, what's, what are our options for the over here and the lower.
There's really like option one through 1.5, 1.7, and then you can take a little bit of one and two and.
Okay.
Yep.
That's good enough. And then, Matt, do you just want to run for the record again, timeline issues?
Well, we know that everybody is interested in making sure that we encumber the asset funding. So our priority is doing this as fast but as thorough as possible for the school district and doing a good job, and that takes time. We're certainly not gonna jeopardize any potential of capturing asset funding by our workflow. But if the board of ed, and I don't want to sound too strong-minded, it's our recommendations, we're professionals, you have to digest the information and decide what's best for the community ultimately. That could mean that you decide not to go forward with anything, a piece of it, all of it. We don't care if that's your decision, we'll give you what our professional expertise and advices. But if you were to decide, let's say hypothetically, we come back in November and you stew it over and in December you decide, yes, we'd like to do this. So then the following milestones are going to a bond referendum, right? Because ideally, let's say you have capital reserve, ideally you have enough money in hand and you don't need to do that, but you still need a vote. Still need a vote to transfer the fund and to use the fund.
Yeah, right.
So that's 45 to 60 days from the date that you decide you're gonna go forward, at the very minimum. Let's just say 90, because I think we want to advise the community appropriately, you know, a PR campaign. So 90 days out from December, we'll just start in January 1. So March, we could have a vote. Vote approves, we begin design. Depending on the scale and the magnitude of the scope of work, if it's an $8 million out, it's gonna probably take a lot less time than the design of 24, $32 million job. So at that point, I can't answer your question going forward until I know what the scope is.
Right.
All I can say is the dollar signs creep up, the complexity of the project creeps up, the longer it takes us to design.
And what do you see once it's submitted up to the state, what does it kind of turn around and begin on plan now?
Right now, the timeline is still very short, four to six weeks, but nobody has gotten their HVAC designed and funded ESSR projects up to the state. And nobody, I should say, in our experience, our clientele has not really recovered from the trenches of COVID to get out into capital project planning. And I expect there's going to be a surge of capital projects going in to SED in the next six months. And the ESSR projects are gonna follow, or if not overlap a little bit, the following six months. And my point is, at the end of the day, I really do think that you're gonna see some postponement of deadlines related to this.
Right.
There's only enough mechanical engineers and engineers in the state to design these projects to reach for the funds. So at the end of the day, it's gonna be a bottleneck.
Only one problem, man. Don't make too much sense.
SED doesn't have a lot of manpower. I mean, they scaled back when COVID hit and they really haven't been able to staff up. If you go to their website, they advertise all the time, looking for architects and engineers, they're short-staffed. All this to me is a writing on the wall, just saying, I would anticipate from land's standpoint that we'll see the typical state delays on things that require you to get E eligibility, and I have a feeling that window is gonna expand for a much greater period of time.
Can we just clarify that just for now, for anybody listening at home and for the board as well? So when the district became eligible to receive federal monies, there is a timeline of which is attached for us to expend those funds. So Matt, speaking of an extension of that timeline, that timeline, given typical facilities planning, can stretch out on you very, very easily. Our timeline is 23 and 24 right now for the two different phases of the Carissa and the ARP money that we have eligible. So on the low side, we will have roughly about $4 million of federal funds to be able to apply towards any work that the district does choose to afford. But what Matt's speaking to is not just in terms of approval through the state, we're certainly going to have to take into account supply chain issues and everything else that's gonna come along with that, even though we have a window that's out that far. I think the other thing that we do need some time to think about, and this will give land and Gerard and the districts some time to look at it over the next 15 to 30 days, before we meet on this again, what are the implications of any of this work? How does the district, we manage this moving forward so that we can make a smart recommendation to the board considered before the board says to go this direction or go that direction?
Yeah, and a normal path of travel, getting it done by 23, we have the time this work, it's the summer.
Right.
So it's the summer of 23, it's the summer of 24.
Right.
Two summers, depending on how much work you want to undertake, there'll be times going into that to acquire the equipment, the contracting experience that is gonna be inundated with these similar types of projects, and the availability of that labor pool come that timeframe, all those market conditions will shift. But normally, I would say 23, 24, no problem, based on the timeline that we sit.
Okay. And what?
Power material lead times.
Well, I was doing the children replacement in Middletown High School. I have 16 weeks currently to get a children. Unit ventilators, depending on when you order them, but this summer, they were 12 to 14 weeks. We did, we replaced 10 unit ventilators, trimming them in Middletown, and we're still not done because we don't have 10 condenser units to go with them yet. Unit ventilators are in, they're running, but thankfully we stayed a plow route out, so we don't need air conditioning, but the condenser units have not come in still.
I don't see that getting better for another year. What about escalation clauses in contrast for this type of thing, for the materials going up?
That's, that's part of the conversation about us needing to rack its out costs. He's getting real numbers, today numbers, so we might see an escalation today, actually, when the market starts to free itself back up and conditions start to return a little bit more back than normal, in other words, supply chains are not broken, there's that huge delays, we may see some costs come down.
Yeah, but the cost could be higher today, maybe for years.
It's possible.
Good as a value. Could be.
Last one, on specific materials.
I was gonna make you out your job a little bit tougher, but.
The market's very volatile. We've just put a big footnote and bold at the bottom of it saying, nothing else we can do at this moment.
Well, the price of copper pipes down 40% in the past three months.
Sorry.
Prices deals come down 30% the last three months. So we're seeing, it's happening in different rates and it's happening for different industries.
Okay, thank you. So just for clarity, land, Gerard, districts will get together in the next 15 to 30 days, we'll reconcile all this together, we'll compare more of the cost estimates bigger than, and then meeting in the middle of November, we'll invite them back again, we'll be able to reduce more concrete evidence, having given all of us some more time to digest it, to make sure that we're bringing more confident numbers forward, given the conditions that we know at that time.
And Dr. Coats, if you wouldn't mind, we appreciate it. If the board wants to ask questions between now and then, please funnel those through Maureen or Dr. Coats, and we'll attempt to address them on the fly or bring answers to our next meeting.
Mr. Freeze, have you had an opportunity to look at this document?
No.
Okay, fair enough. We'd love to hear your input once you get it.
I would have one comment. If you guys ever replace the shower head in your house, then you turn it on, you go take a shower and, you know, you're like, where's all the water? So that meets current code, but it may not be acceptable in practice. You may have to go in and pull out the little prescriptive. I just wanted to point that out here, that if we just go with option one, it may not solve our issues or solve the INQ or the comfort problems. We don't want to get lulled into just cost, we need to look at the whole scope of work. And to that end, you know, I looked at it a little bit to know that there's some things I'd like to talk to the architect and engineer about in order to reconcile the existing condition, existing condition of the boilers, and how much life expectancy is left. So let's take Scotstown Avenue. I can do the numbers from the report, there's about 13 years left in the life expectancy of the boilers, and they'll go 13 years. But what if we change the boiler in 13 years? Would you want to add steam boilers again? Probably not. But if we went with all steam units, we'd have to replace the units and the boilers. So those are the types of questions I'd like to explore a little further, so we could get the scope of work down and then price that scope of work reconciled with maintenance and how we have to maintain it. And then in terms of pricing, let's look at the total cost of ownership over its life expectancy. And those costs include maintenance, we have to hire a guy that maintained 250 condenser units or pay a consultant to do that. What's the life expectancy of one of these units, 15 years versus maybe 25 or 30 on a chiller? You know, so we have to look at all of those things, make an educated decision, and think as board and the community, and, you know, get the best value for the district. Or it could be a longer-term horizon or a bigger view. That's all I'm saying. I earnestly look forward to the opportunity for Dr. Coats and our engineers to provide our feedback through those channels.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin. So as we, as we start to think more critically about our academic program and as we look at how our students are progressing, I asked Ms. Martin to, going up tonight, to give us an overview of the evening high school program. I know Ms. Martin has been working very closely with the high school staff in preparation of expanding our evening high school program again, and I asked her to be prepared tonight to speak to some of the planning she's been working on to share with the board. So I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Something that we wanted to be aware of were specifically the needs of the students. So we looked at the courses that most students need, so that it would be the most feasible to, that's a number of needs, with these requirements, and they also fit with graduation requirements. So we leaned down to the sixth classes that would be proposed, that afford students to be in there for myriad reasons, but with the consequences of the teacher. It would take place after school from 3:00 to 5:00, and we adjusted that kind of slightly so that we could be cognizant of the transportation and be able to run through the classrooms that exist right now. Our primary goals are to be able to show real data of how students are moving as resources are required. So whether it's credit attainment, whether it's progression towards their graduation, which means changing our own school graduation rates, or whether it's. or whether it's support in both the courses that they have in the course of the day, allowing them to continue on their path over four years with their credit attainment. Those are things that we want to be able to measure at the beginning, record out at halfway mark, and then look at a summary report as well. So as I said, we would look towards credit recovery, there'd be one in less than 18 months, and the impact that's on the students. It's challenging to do sometimes within the day without overtaxing our kids and their needs. We also want to make sure we're maintaining our graduation achievements. So right now, we have students who would be slated for these classes and be able to maintain their four-year graduation status with their cohort so that we can really continue successfully with our graduation. We do anticipate that a large majority will be able to staff from within the district. But if needed, we may look to teachers who might want to join us outside the district, always making sure that we have the best candidates for the position in place. And, you know, think about, this is for a year, but maintain, how could this program also grow and serve additional needs for students? So just wanted to touch on the possibilities for further conversation on how we could pilot elective courses through this program, or we could offer different project-based learning or portfolio development options as well. Which is something to bear in mind. Do you have any questions?
How many students are we looking at right now that we already have probably said, you know, are ready to do this?
38. And that keeps our class size as small with not so direct instruction available, it's not very instruction, but also sustainable at board maximizing the qualifications. Is that how many students you can take total, or is that just a joke? That's correct. So if students demonstrate a need throughout the year, they have flexibility within the program, especially for extension classes. That said, we also offer students who may be tutoring for me because of a particular issue, they're involved in the principal, we can accommodate additional needs to.
I think you've talked about this prior analysis of the prior, the one where you're going to split it up. I'm actually giving credit for that. Is there a way we can grow this potentially into SAT prep? I know you said you offer SAT prep early, but a 3 to 5 kind of looked up nicely. Potentially, maybe on a shorter-term basis too, I could probably get SATs. So that'd be like 38 English class, something that geared towards SAT prep and, or even you talked about prior, in our guidance conversation over the years, some type of college plan.
So some flexibility we do have is in additional staffing, where SAT could be offered twice weekly or in the alternating math and English sections. So there's a lot of flexibility to do that. And we could pair it with teachers who might be teaching algebra or English 11 classes, they're very interested. And that way we can alternate the nights, because if we're working with Monday through Thursday and we have courses on a particular night, they could go back to that. And certainly, we have talked about, even within the school counseling department, ways to provide college essay writing workshops, also financial aid information for paths and completion sessions for families to be able to partner in that process, especially throughout the fall. And then more looking at the preparation of our juniors in the spring with the planning and development of their essays, with our goal being really, they go into summer with a pretty solid draft of their college essay.
In the past also, we have used a third-party provider for the SAT prep. ESA used to come out and they have their own instructor that talks to courses on a regular basis.
They are also available if we wanted to offer that time slot to them and contract those services.
Everything is something that comes in once already, and then upcoming. And often other people in the community have talked about this. Something I think we should seriously look at. Any other question?
So I'm going to pinch it for Mr. Carter tonight. We had a technology committee meeting two Tuesdays ago now? One Tuesday ago, forgetting, wasn't tracking the timeframes. Our conversation in the technology committee heavily focused on our hardware and where our hardware needs currently stand. If you think back to when we initially talked about technology in the classroom, we focused heavily on making sure that devices were available in every classroom. So when a child moved, the device didn't move with them. A classroom was outdated to make sure that we had enough Chromebooks to need space. Well, as the pandemic launched us into a different perspective, I think we are now turning a new page to look at, how can we control our inventory? How can we have a sustainable refresh for our inventory? But also look at more of a one-to-one device perspective from making sure that a student has accessibility when needed, the availability of resources for the district to invest in other parts of technology, i.e. robotics, hardware needs for instructional purposes, digital boards, things like that, become part of our regular repertoire, and it is sustainable in the future. We had had some very high-level conversation about the possibility of when a child enters fifth grade, that they would be issued a Chromebook. And the regular lifespan of a Chromebook is four years, so that Chromebook would essentially be assigned to them up and through, including eighth grade. And when they get to ninth grade, they get issued a second one again. That, again, is a, certainly a sustainable model, given the current level of autonomy within the district. The other pieces that we spent a large amount of time on was really software. Mr. Sterrett and Mr. Redeker have worked pretty hard to make sure that our purchasing, purchasing capabilities, if you will, have been focused to make sure that we don't have any redundancy in the district, that our purchases are mindful and that we are using our resources effectively. We are certainly very careful to make sure that all the purchases that we make are Ed Law 2D compliant. That has been an enormous undertaking from Mr. Redeker in working in collaboration with staff around the building. I shouldn't just say the building, the district for that matter, to make sure that we are certainly protecting the information, the student information, especially that travels across these software programs. We need to continue to do that, it's state law, we need to ensure that we are in compliance. And then we did spend a decent amount of time at the end, we circled back around to speaking about software, I'm sorry, hardware needs again in the future. As we just finished the last capital project, we made a pretty heavy investment in our steam lab at the high school. Some of those are pretty significant purchases. I already had a conversation with some of the high school staff, Mr. Pidore especially, to start to think out three years. If we're going to sustain our programming and we need to start to think about the refresher, the what next, what do we need to be planning for? Is it robotics, is it drones? What's going to be exciting, that the coursework is not only going to draw the students in, but it's going to serve them well for life beyond high school as well? If there's anything else, whether it's showing, I think you've had it up here.
I think it was a good meeting, you know, we had talked about, you know, as we settle in here a little bit, given what Dr. Coats said, getting into a steady, more sustainable, average investment in the Chromebook area. Past practices, I initially got the board seven years ago, was more of a lump sum approach, which is much more difficult to manage. Because it puts us in a bad position as they come off warranty. They almost never get out of the cycle, basically. So we're trying to invest there and mitigate that and get more on a yearly basis that's sustainable and even budgeted, which will really bring us to the budget line at some point on a board level. Obviously, technology is not going to be less, or isn't less, of our lives than women in our lives, which includes our students and our teachers. So I think as we study our budget further with our new superintendent, we're hoping to find, one of our goals has always been, and it can be efficiencies. And when we find efficiencies in our lines in our budget to allow us to allocate more funds to board technology line without affecting our overall budget, like any business or any household does. Should we go there with these? So that's something that Dr. Coats has been keenly aware of and will be watching a lot of the shares working there. At the board, I think, you know, we do need to increase that budget line so we can plan out that for all of our needs. That's more of a board discussion than it was a discussion, but something I've been advocating for a while. Overall, it was a good meeting, and I think we're getting some good ideas and maybe it's not played out for after.
Just one last piece, one of the ongoing conversations that seems to come full circle many times too is what is appropriate for the elementary setting as well? We have some pretty extensive conversations about, you put a Chromebook in front of a first or a second grader. When we started to think about state assessment, students were moving to online assessments in third grade. They can't simply learn to type on a keyboard in third grade, there has to be some buildup to that. But then there has to be the developmental appropriateness of what is appropriate to put a first grader or a second grader before they get to that point. Now, it's not just about state testing, when you think about simple developmental appropriateness, dexterity, coordination, letter recognition, number recognition, all of these things go along with that. I don't know that we have necessarily landed the ship on exactly what's perfect for that, but certainly it has been a deep part of the conversation because it has to mirror what our investment plans are today at the same time, to make sure that we're purchasing appropriate devices to meet the needs of the educational center in the K2 building as well. Very good point. Thank you, sir.
Any question with the best technology? Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The motion? Shannon? They resolve upon a recommendation of the superintendent schools. The Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. There is no old business, we'll move on to new business. 13.1, approved minutes for regular meeting. The motion? Mike? Allison? They resolve upon a recommendation of the superintendent schools. The Board of Education approves the minutes for the October 4th, 2021, and October 14th, 2021, regular board meetings. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. 13.2, need a motion for approval of the evaluator for teacher certifications. Mike? Billy? They resolve that pursuant to the requirement of Education Law Section 3012-D and Part 30-2, not nine, of the region's rules, the following person has completed all required training to be recertified by this Board of Education as lead evaluator for classroom teachers. Jason Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. 13.3, need a motion to approve settlement agreement with CSEA. Allison? They resolve upon a recommendation of the superintendent schools. The Board of Education approves the grievance settlement agreement between the Board of Education and the Goshen Central School District and the Civil Service Employees Association dated October 5th, 2021, as presented. They have further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute this settlement agreement. All in favor? Vote. Anything we want to talk about, right? November 1st, is everybody okay with the superavowal on that thing? Okay, so we're going to move November 1st to where we want for our workshop meeting later. Workshop remotely for board? Okay? We need that changed. And then we're going to keep the 15th, I think, as a regular meeting. And we want to ask, 20 seconds is a problem. Because we want to. Maybe the 15th, we can start, we can start early. Are there any pushback there regarding the meeting? You want to start at 5:30? 5:30? Maybe we start, be safe, and we'll put seven. Are there any of that? Or can we say immediately after? We'll say seven. So keep the dates. We're going to keep the dates, version 15. First is going to become not a regular meeting, but a little workshop for the purpose of superintendent evaluation software training. The 15th will now turn into a two-part meeting. The first part will be the beginning of the normal objectives conversation for the board, which obviously ties into our training on the superavowal, so we can go over looking at and how to operate it. And then immediately after, around 7 o'clock, we start at 5:30 or 7, we'll have the regular portion of the meeting. Will that include Lamb?
Yes.
Is there anything? Do I need to read that one? I thought I did, right? Okay, so first.
Just do the first two and then also the next.
All right, because remember now, the only thing we're changing is, I don't need, I don't need a second part of that, right? We're not doing the other eight.
You're not going to have one of these? No.
We'll do the workshop, we'll do the workshop on the first, and we'll do the board objectives, beginning conversation on the 15th at 5:30. And the regular meeting at 7. Do I need to put that in there or not?
No, I'll just, I'll just print it. You can go down, right?
Go down to first?
Yeah, the first and then the 18th would be 5:30 workshop proposing objectives and 7 o'clock regular meeting.
15?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I need a ten minute here, 13.4. As we set up our November meetings. Shannon, Billy? The motion? They resolve that Board of Education will change to November 1st, 2021, regular board meeting at 6:30 PM to a board workshop only remotely. I'm going to add it there. For the purpose of board member training on superavowal. They further resolve, Board of Education will schedule a 5:30 PM on November 15th, board and objectives. We're about. And move the regular portion of the meeting to a start at 7:00 PM. Think I have that right? Yeah? All in favor?
Do we have a regular scheduled meeting or any of you?
No.
Yeah. Yeah, it was the first one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Does he, now we got a motion, does he?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Vote. Um, can we go to the floor? Work memorations.
Just real quick, I don't know if you guys got it, but Onboard came today. There's a good article about all the HVAC systems in all the schools that are up there. So to their point, you know, getting stuff and everybody being involved real quick is probably going to happen.
Right. Yep. And everybody's got the money, and everybody's got.
Exactly.
Ideas, who's taking that first?
And there are thirty-six thousand schools in New York, I believe it said, and there have been improvements, improvements. A good chunk of those are U S A schools, which are totally failing in the HVAC.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see that yet. Then you. Motion to close the meeting. Allison and Mike. All in favor?
Aye.